You didn't come to order where to have the pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First tonight, we have a hearing. For petition of no G O partners for the conditional use. Before we get into that, George, can you do roll call, please?
Sure, Commissioner Baako.
Here.
Commissioner Gorioso.
Here.
Commissioner Rakowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary, Commissioner Whitaker, Michael Pierce, myself, George Nigels.
As I stated, this is a conditional use hearing for Fifth and Cherry Tree Road. I'll be handing it over to our solicitor, Michael Pierce.
We have a number of exhibits that are present that will make part of the record before the application begins. Exhibit A would be the conditional use application. Exhibit B would be the deed indicating ownership of the property. Exhibit C would be aerial image of the property. Exhibit D would be the denied zoning permit, which is the result of today's hearing petition from that. Letter exhibit E is the letter from the owner. Exhibit F is the letter from the proposed daycare. Exhibit G is the legal posting of the property. There are two of those there with the affidavits. Exhibit H is the zoning officer property posting. Exhibit I is the Southern Delaware County Authority Review Letter to the property owners. Exhibit J is the list of property owners within a 500 square foot radius pursuant to our zoning code for the conditional use. Exhibit K is the site plan. Exhibit L is the construction plan itself. And exhibit M are the certified mail receipts and return cards. This was duly advertised and exhibit N would be the affidavit which we're waiting for from the Delaware County Daily Times. However, I have confirmed that it was appropriately advertised for that. At this point in time, we would entertain a presentation by the applicant. Mr. Weiss, you're going to handle that start, please. Thank you.
Is this on? Okay. Yeah, my name is Donald Weiss. I'm an attorney in Chad's Ford. I am the owner of the property and I too cheap to hire an attorney to represent me. So I felt that I was the best, best person to make this presentation as I know this property very well. I bought the property four years ago from a bank that had foreclosed on it. When I bought it, it was empty. Six bathrooms in it downstairs. There were two apartments, each with two bathrooms and upstairs there was two bathrooms. The total building is 6,200 square feet. And the proposal for the condition uses, I have a tenant and she's here. The tenant who wants to operate a group child daycare center renting 5,000, 5,100 square feet of the building. That's part of the upper floor and the entire lower level. When I bought the building, I said, the only thing I saw on the outside was a boat captain school thing. I think that's what it was, but I don't know what it was used. This woman over here has asked me about the dentist office. I don't know whether it was a dentist office or doc. I've heard a lot of different things that it's been over the years. I just know that it was a captain's sea school, something like that. Now, if I have the picture aerial, I don't know if you all have the aerial and I would hand it out if, if you want to see it. Because this is a relevant part of it. We do have, okay. Behind the bill, I own behind the building to the opposite side of the creek that runs behind the building and alongside of the building. Now, there is a small portion of the backside that is in a blood plane. My engineer will tell us that it's not in a team of blood plane. But, but, what we had is we had, well, couple of months after I bought the property and it flooded the parking lot. It never got to the building, but it flooded the parking lot. So I had my landscaper who's here to testify and he checked out the creek. And unfortunately, what had been happening in the creek is, I presume upstream of the creek, people had been dumping stuff. So the creek was filled with tree limbs, railroad ties, landscape ties, branches, concrete block. So I had my landscaper at that time, empty out the creek and continue to maintain looking at the creek. He says he does it every week when he get, or every week when he cuts it. But at the very least, I tell him to do it at least monthly or bi-monthly. And he does it and ever since then, we have not had any water problem, even in the parking lot. I have my maintenance man here who lives in Upper Chichester. He goes to the property. He checks it every time that it rains, just to make sure so he can, he's going to testify. He's here to testify that since we cleaned out the creek and since we had that flooding in the parking lot, we haven't had any water issue in the parking lot. I know that I've heard that that's an issue. People have said, well, that's gets flooded. Well, it doesn't get flooded and I wouldn't be trying to lease it if it does get flooded, if it did get flooded. Anyway, so that's the portion about the flood plain. Now, in addition, I'm not sure how many, I'm sure George is familiar, George Naddles is familiar with what Pendot is planning or what they've already planned to do at the site. They've already paid me and they condemned the property, some of the property frontage along Cherry Tree to widen Cherry Tree Road. But the biggest thing that they're going to do.
You could take the mic with you if you want. Comes undone.
What's confusing to me was with the creek. I didn't even realize that I, I own the whole creek, all the way from my property line all the way around here up to the, what do you call it, culvert under the road or bridge or something? Now, what they're planning to do is they're going to take the sycamore tree, there's a big sycamore tree there. They're doing to take that down. Then they're going to fill in the creek all the way back to the bend. Then they're going to run the creek across this other property. I presume Lisa, it's probably more familiar. Oh, you're not familiar with what they're planning to do. Well, they're playing, that's what they're planning to do. And then they're going to run it across the, the open area there and run it all the way down. And what they're doing by creek or the creek is they're going to fill it and then put stone all the way up to level. So that eventually I will have about 10 more parking spaces. And I could put blacktop, if I have, if I want a blacktop, I have to block. So that's what Pendot and they've already paid me for the easements in the right of way and temporary easement in order to do it. And what they've done is they've assured me that they will not block off the usage of parking area, at least during, whenever a tenant needs the parking area. So that's this story about Pendot. And now Pendot, the plans are supposed to be next summer, but as you all know, Pendot doesn't operate at the same schedule rest of us do. And therefore I told the tenant that it's likely to be the summer of seven, uh, summer of 24, maybe even the summer of 25. I currently have Allen Myers, the, the engineering construction company. They rent 1,100 square feet of the top floor. They have, they have people going in and out that are engineers working on the various projects in the area. And that's what they do. So they rent and they're on the top floor, 1,100. The building is two stories, one's totally above grade and that's 3,100 square feet. The lower level, which is about a third on, probably a third under grade and two thirds above grade. That's 3,100 square feet and Allen Myers rents 1,100 square feet on the upper level. I'd like to get the, and my landscaper, my maintenance man to testify now about the, what they did to make sure that the flooding. So that I, I have witnesses to convince you all that there's no flood issue. So. By the way, Mike, when I suggested, if I'm all the kids. Okay, and I guess I should have been sworn in technically. I'd like to call Connor Buck Havigs first. Where would you like him to sit? Connor, would you state your name and spell your last name?
Connor Balkhavich, B A L C A V A G E.
And what is your occupation?
Uh, landscape contractor, contractor.
And how long have you been a landscaping contractor for me?
Uh, six years.
And have you been doing the landscape and contracting for 450 Cherry Tree since I acquired?
Yes.
And you heard me testify as to what my recollection is regarding the flooding. Explain with your recollections, is it the same as mine and then you explain what you do?
Uh, yes, well, same recollection he had, uh, we cleaned out all the trash in the creek. It's a lot of miscellaneous debris that was clogging up and dam, damming at the bend in the creek, uh, causing flooding prior. Uh, so we cleaned out the creek and maintained banks so they don't get super overgrown and trash and debris doesn't get in creeks. I haven't seen any flooding since.
And Connor, you said it was clogging at the bend in the, in the creek. And that's the bend that Pendot is going to straighten out.
So we, this bend right here, which is what we cleaned out until it was damming up. And that's what it was causing water to come up.
And, and since then, you continue continually and constantly watch the stream?
Yes, uh, at least once a month, usually twice a month.
And have you noticed any flooding issue since you took care of it back in 2018?
No.
No questions.
Can I, can I make a comment? Um, Lisa, me and you met with a homeowner upstream from there. Remember what they have the creek going through their backyard? And after that, you had a shop up on Chelsea Parkway. They cleaned one of them retention ponds out. Well, it's just coincidence yesterday at, at the elections, he come into me and said, ever since they cleaned that out, they haven't had a problem either. Could that have had a bearing on this too? That was around the same time it was.
Thank you. Can he be excused? This is my maintenance man. Jim, would you state your name and spell your last name?
Yeah, James Borden, B O R D E N. I do property maintain, property maintenance and repairs and improvements. I live at 777 Cherry Tree Road, Hidden Homes of Hidden Valley, right up the street from this property. Uh, yes, prior to your, yes. Correct, yes. Yes, I go by there frequently, just in my travels and whenever we have a storm, I go down prior to the storm to make sure there's no fallen branches that are going to dam up the creek. And then when the rain, heavy rain comes through, I go down and check and make sure that there hasn't been any flooding in the parking lot or anything. Yes, and I can also add that being there during the storms, the water level has never risen to the top of the creek bed. There is one, there is a wall on the one side and then on Mr. Weiss's side, there's a berm. You know, it's just at the earthen edge of the, edge of the creek. And the water has never lived, risen up to the top level since. And the water has never lived, risen up to the top level since Connor dredged, dredged the creek and got all the debris out. It was overgrown pretty heavily, just from not being maintained because it was empty. And, uh, I cut back a lot of the vegetation and Connor came in and finished. Correct. The water only came up about partway through the parking lot, never threatened the building. So we never had any issue with rain runoff water or floodwaters coming into the building ever, even prior to us fixing, correcting the problem. Regularly, yes. Correct. Both of us, actually, both of us, yes. His landscaping company cuts the grass and, and trims along the edges. I go by, there are some trees in the area and sometimes there's dead branches that fall down and cross the creek. So I'll go down and check and make sure none of that's happened in between his cuttings.
And, and if you notice it and you can't do it, then you call Connor to take care of it.
That's correct. If it's too big for me to do, I let him know.
Thank you. No further questions at this rate. Jim and Connor, are, would you, is Jim and Connor, they, are they excused? Thank you. Uh, Jack, did you get? Chi Commissioners, and it was from Mike Seoga at C E A, at the tenure hearing. Okay. And did you take that into consideration in revising your plans? You can go back to the picture of the, of the parking area. I say, yeah, I think what you're saying, Jack, is your original plans had it to play around here. Based upon the tenure hearing letter, you moved it from here to there. And you believe that that's in compliance with their request for not encroaching on these sewers? Were you going to verify anything of what Pendott's planning to do or is this part of your job? So this was off of the CAD file that the Pendott engineers. And, and what you did here, you believe is in compliance with the township, Robinson's, with respect to. And this. I have no further questions of Mr. Robinson?
I have one. Where's the pickup and drop off area?
Yes. Yeah, this is, this is going to be a group daycare center. Call the group, call the group. Um, I think, and I'll, I'll, I have the tenants here and I think the tenants will be addressed what you're talking about, but I, they've indicated to me that the plan will be that, and they'll, they'll describe when these parents will be coming in. Because unlike a, an elementary school, they won't be coming in 8:30 and leaving at 8:30. They'll be dribbling in from 6:30 and so on and so forth. But the plan is that they're going to have a person and like Nicole will testify more, but they'll have a person who will meet, meet the parents here. Children will come in and register and be in circular traffic, actually pulling and pulling in. Describe, you're thinking they're going to be doing.
I know there's state requirements, there's so many kids per square foot.
Yes.
So you know how many kids roughly it'll be so far?
Well, we're hoping to eventually get to 70, to tell you the truth, that's what it's like to get to. But we know that's going to be gradual, it's going to be 30, 35, 40. And the other thing too is they're not all going to be there every day. Because some kids are not going to be there. We're going to have a, Nicole will describe, we're going to have a preschool. People who have to go and can't take their child to school. Be at 6:30, then the type of bus. Same thing in the afternoon, so the children whose parents can't pick them up at school will come here until six or seven o'clock. But I think Nicole would be able to show them that.
What's the square footage of the playground? Is, is it sufficient to handle the amount of children that you're going to have?
Over, over here on the top side, side is grassy area. And my, you know, again, I'm just a lawyer, so I don't know what I'm talking about. But I would have put it on the grassy area and put the, at the, uh, daycare initiated area close to there. That's what it is. Because the plan for the building, as, uh, you may have seen the plans for the building, they put a handicap entrance. Handicap entrance will go there, there's an entrance here, but the handicap entrance will be up there. And that's where, again, in, that's where I would put the, uh, the playground. Gives you more area and it's closer to the building. And, and could the playground be extended towards the sewer, oh, it's right up to the sewer? Nicole will tell you that the kids don't all go out at the same time to go to the park. Also, uh, if I remember in the, uh, Catania Engineering Letter, did they, did they say you couldn't put, they didn't say you couldn't use it as a playground, you just couldn't put structures on, swing set or. Yeah, and I assume you've all seen it, I know Nicole and AJ have it. There's an easement for the sewer easement. And Ms. Ms. Catania is the engineer for the township and she said, we should not put any structure like a swing set or anything on top of sewer easement. So we had to stay off of sewers or with what I believe would be a structure type of thing, a swing, jungle gym or one of those kids playing nowadays.
I have a couple of questions. Um, your playground, how are, how are the kids going to get there safely from the building over through the parking lot?
Well, when the handicap entrance is put in, they'll be walking out of the handicap entrance, which is on the north. Walking down, they'll be crossing those two parking spots if they have to get to it.
Is there a walkway for them to be on or are they just going to go through the parking lot?
If that would be a condition, I'll put a walkway.
The other question is the, uh, parking space, as you said, there's 18, I guess. Is that the consideration with the top floor and all the employees up there also? Or is it, that's just your numbers for the daycare? Because this is the whole building. Plus employees upstairs and downstairs. Right, but six employees total, how many is upstairs?
Two.
That's all.
And parking along the, right now, there's parking along the creek. It's parallel parking, but when the creek gets filled in, then I can do perpendicular parking. Leave Pendott, I calculated that we should be able to get eight additional spaces at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Robinson? As a follow-up to Mr. Pierce's, um, question. I would, when, when, if I get, if we get conditional use, then I, I know I have to put a, we have to put a fence up and you might have conditions that I have to put a, a landscape barrier between my property and the next door neighbor's property and possibly some other places. So I do realize that, that I could have some conditions and, uh, I will meet whatever conditions I'm told to. My next witness, uh, and Jack can leave, is that okay with everybody if Jack leaves? Nicole, my next witness is AJ Reed. AJ is the founder of an organization and she already operates for, I'll let her tell you what she's doing. But she's an operator of four other daycares all over. She and Nicole, uh, who's going to be the onsite manager of this property are going to be partners in this property. And they came to me to rent it and we have a lease. Of course, the lease is conditioned on my complying with your requirements and getting conditional approval. So she could always decide or if you don't, then she's not bound to the lease in the property. I, I did, I did tell in the beginning that one of the things that's been cumbersome about trying to sell or lease this property is that oddly enough, the most common type of organization that comes to rent it is a daycare center. And more than half of those care centers are moderately priced daycares. They're not the Goddard School, the Kinder Care, whatever the other, uh, cash, what AJ has told me, they're called. They don't, they don't have many state grant children. And then, and Nicole, who's the manager, going to be the manager, has done a survey of the area. But AJ came to me and, and most of the people that have come to me to lease it or buy it for a daycare center have been saying that, you know, the difficulty is finding a place that is modest, moderately priced, uh, that they can lease. And that's AJ came to meet or see this property. AJ, would you, uh, state your name and spell your last name? And what do you do for a living? And do you have other locations? You know, while you're here.
Yes, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the last question. Yeah, I'll, I said, I said, you have four.
Yeah. AJ, you're going to have to tell them. I asked how many other, um, locations or operations she has? And are they, um, predominantly state grant operation? How many? And how many children are, just on an average, how many children are each of the locations, 30, 50, 70? And would you describe for the board, uh, what, and, and because I didn't even know it when I was talking here and you, you enlightened me on, on what, uh, children would qualify in order to get a state grant and run them from the state. So would you tell the board what you're hoping that we will be addressing at this location? Well, maybe you could do, maybe both the occasions you need to talk. So would you state your role and spell your last name? What, your projection, this occasion, how many do you believe would be state grant? And for, and for those that are state grant, will you be charging, or will you be agreeing to accept whatever the state? But that will not be any more than the state grant. So the children that are on state grant, not paying any addition. But that's based upon what the state says, not what you say. And the state says it's based upon the income and the number of children in the family in the household. So how are you going to help them? Well, you're not trying to say the other places are unreasonable. Trying to say that they charge what they charge in order to make. And you're going to be the day-to-day manager at the location. And what is your background, what is your education background? And the location will have to comply with state regulations again. And, and that is one of the conditions, I think, you have by the state and the local state agencies.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. We brought up earlier the issue of parking and drop-off and pickup. Can you provide some more information on that? That's fine. So the employees will be parking across the street? In the first row, along Cherry?
Not across Cherry Street Road, but.
Okay. And then what are the ages of the, the children that are, you're going to be accepting? And you're providing before care and after care? And all day? Some children will be there all day? All right, thank you.
Describe the before school and the after school. You heard me describe it. The way A.J. described it to me was that the children could be dropped off at 6:00 or 6:30. You would hold the children at your place until the school across the street opened up. And then you would van them across the street when the school opened up, is that correct? In addition, in the afternoon, likewise, the same thing. You would pick the children up if their parents aren't picking them up. And then you would bring them to your place and hold them until 7:00 or 8:00.
So you're planning to have an agreement with the school district? Or you're going to have your own van or is the school district going to be picking them up?
You say bus, I think it's a full-size bus. I understand, but we need to make sure, if it's a full-size bus, you need to make sure that bus can get in there and turn. So is it a bus or is it a van?
So my question was, my question was, were they working on an arrangement? Because, you know, some of the childcare facilities do have where the school will drop off, school will pick up. So if they did get an agreement with the district, I'm sure it would be a van and not a bus.
Mostly. Very rare to see a full-size bus coming in.
Yeah.
And they haven't gotten that far yet because it's the first time. And as their landlord, I wouldn't let a full-size bus go down there because then I'd be paying for the parking lot. Picture a van type of a bus. But we're not even, we haven't even gotten there. Condition, I would make it a condition because I'm not going to let a full-size bus come down the parking lot.
Make sure the number of children, employees, and then, you know, it also makes sure that the. I think we need to have an understanding of the maximum number of children permitted based on square foot. So I heard up to 70 children that you were fitting, basically having.
They're hoping to have them roaming up to 70.
Just about a state, yeah.
And in addition, in addition, in addition, I'm sorry. In addition, the way A.J. explained it to me is even if you have children, well, 55 or less showing up in any one particular day. And likewise, with the respect to the playground, I know you have requirements for the playground. And we would comply with the requirements at the time for the playground. But all the children are not going to be going to the playground at the same time either. So you wouldn't have every child out there. You would probably, you would be taking them out, just like, just like when I was a kid. It was going to be the first graders or the second graders and third graders.
So I have another question. You talked, you spoke about the subsidies for the state and the income levels, right? And you're charging a flat fee regardless of some, like, for example, I might not qualify for a subsidy or so another family might. So if it's 300 a week, it's 300 a week regardless of your income. So are you planning, do you know how many families you're planning to take with the subsidy versus cash payers versus a subsidy? Are you, and I don't know if this, this, I may not be asking this correctly, but is it going to be based on where people live? Can anyone bring their child there or they need to live in this area, right? Or work in this area? And depending on their age, then you would be potentially having a, an agreement with another school district for busing, right? Okay, thank you.
And as you can see economically, it doesn't make any difference whether the person is subsidized or because they're going to, you're going to get the same money whether the job is subsidized or not subsidized.
I think we can regulate that.
Right, right.
I understand it, but. For the community and, and Nicole, when you're doing your, so, did you? Subsidized children? So it's, you made, I think that that's too much. It's insane that, I think this is a question, which means it's something that is needed in this area.
Mr. Wise, are you pretty much, I want to open it up to the public comment. And we're getting towards the end of it. And did you have all your witnesses?
Oh, yeah, no, that's, that's, that's totally, that's just a question for the district. Typically, if, if, if you have something like that, depending on the number of children, they're not going to give you a bus, right? They're going to give you a van, especially if they're small children. Like, that's, that's irrelevant, that's just a, that's just a question. Just to put in your mind that you're going to have to have agreements with districts if you're going to be busing to.
Hopefully, a lot of them would be from across the street because it's.
Right, right.
Right now, I'm going to. Thank you. We're going to move along with some public comments here. I'm going to, fortunately, we had to do both ways today. Ever since COVID, we go by the telephone phone-ins. We'll go with that first, I'll give the phone number out. This is just in regards to the hearing that was just presented tonight. Let me find my number here. If you're dialing in tonight for the comments only for the hearing, you dial 571-748-4021. That number again is 571-748-4021. The code again is 115-364-78POUND. So I'll mute your phone, 768, is what I have there. Yeah, sorry. So I'll mute your phone, dial star six, state your name, address, and telephone number if you want us to get back to, to you. The phone lines will be open for a few minutes and we're opening it up to the public here after the phone calls are in.
And now I just wanted to point out that I'm sure you all are aware, the property is 600 feet from the gas station. We will positively build a place with smoke detectors and fire extinguishers required by you, I'm sorry, is required by the township and the state. There are no gas pumps within this location. And we will put up a fence in accordance with the ordinance. And my plan would be to put a stockade fence along the north property line. And I know the fence, the rest of the fence must be at least four feet high and go to the ground. Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Oh, it's also not closer than 500 feet to any other daycare.
Take note, there was no phone calls in tonight. We'll be opening it up to the public that's here tonight. We'll go to the front of the room. This is just for the hearing tonight. We get into the next meeting after we're done this one. State your name and telephone number, you could go up to the podium. Your name, your address, and your telephone number if you'd like us to get back to you.
My name is Marius. I live in Cherry Tree Knoll in the direct area where this office built, building is. It was a dentist's office. To address your first remark, my envelope, I did not sign the receipt. It was torn off. I have a common mailbox, it's probably doing a lot of the props. Other people said the same thing. I don't know that that matters to you. My concern about this operation is the traffic and the parking. Some, the state has taken some of Cherry Tree Knoll property on Cherry Tree View to, for the widening, I guess, of Cherry Tree View. They are, we had to sell it to them. They are. We hadn't sell it to them. I don't know what their plans are, but that's definitely going to inconvenience us. But the other thing that concerns me greatly is the increased traffic on Cherry Tree. You know, it's since they began widening. Three twenty-two up farther. Traffic has increased on Cherry Tree New. No, is I I'm up at six o'clock in the morning and I see a lot of cars going down. The road then. We have. A a house across the street. That has been using our private parking place when they've had contractors there. And just in the last month, they themselves used it while they had some work. Now, we our parking is going to be affected. I have no idea what the state will do with their vehicles. When they begin to work on Cherry Tree Room, and that's my concern. The traffic, the people who take their children to school come and park there rather than go in the line and drop them off. Or pick them up. So they're using our our private property and there's. Not much said to them because they're not there all of the time. But if we have state vehicles. Parking in our area, there's no room on the other side of Cherry Tree Boo. For any type of parking like that. The houses are pretty close to the street. So that's my concern about this whole thing is the the parking and the traffic. That's it.
Any other public comments regarding the hearing tonight in the audience?
I might be able to answer some of her questions, George, too. I mean, some of the reasons why PennDOT is taking them properties. Is to widen them the road. And the intersection is going to get expanded, made bigger. There's going to be turning lanes, everything. I mean. Not just for the daycare, but hopefully it helps all them problems. I mean. It's probably what two years away before we hit hit that, but. I mean, hopefully that relieves some of the problems you're having. They keep up, taking out the medium. And they're not supposed to.
Okay, any other questions?
Just in case I need to move my exhibits or did you move?
Thank you. Done. I'm muting your phones, state your name, address, telephone number if you want us to get back to you. And you have two minutes, then you will place back on mute. Our lines will be open for a few minutes. Take note, there was no call-ins tonight. We'll go to the floor here at at the township. If any resident here like make a comment. Take note, no public comments tonight. We'll move on to our meeting. I need an approval from October thirteenth Board of Commissioners. Any questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered. Number six through nine will be from Madam Vice President Nicole Whitaker.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Just a couple of announcements. Tomorrow morning, we will be hosting our first annual Veterans Day. Celebration honoring all those who have served. With a free breakfast here at the municipal building, eighty-five hundred Ferry Road. We will begin serving breakfast at ten AM. And want to. Please share the information. This has been posted on our township page, Facebook page, and has been shared, but please send reminders. For our veterans to come out. Also, the holiday celebration will be held again at the Willbrook Shopping Center on November the twenty-sixth. We will start the day with the Santa Sprint. If you'd like to register for that, it's a five K run or walk. Twenty-five dollars a person, eighteen years of age or older. Eighteen and younger are free. So if you have children that want to join, they are under eighteen or at no cost. It says all registrants must wear a Santa hat. So make sure that you have a Santa hat if you're if you're planning to to join. And again, so that that starts, I believe that starts at eleven. At eleven AM. And again, that's at Willbrook Shopping Center. Hi. Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to take necessary steps to acquire Greenwood Avenue. And Cherry Street, Folio number zero nine dash zero zero dash zero one three seven eight dash zero zero. And zero nine dash zero zero dash zero one three seven eight dash zero one.
Any questions?
It will be used for public purposes and. I don't want to run into problems down the road. With access either. So we need to have a clear where our access is going to be because that is not a public street. It is a shared driveway, the access to it right now. So we just need to be clarifying that for the when we when we go to purchase it.
My my suggestion would be that we we put together on a plan. What the access would be and the boundaries and everything so that it's clearly delineated. So when we go into those negotiations. It's it's known and out there of exactly what our access point will be. As there are a couple of planned roads in that area that have never been opened, so we we may be able to. Figure something out there.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, that's something to think about while you're in there doing. Any other questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered.
Consider a motion authorizing the township manager to advertise a hearing on December eighth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty PM. For the Upper Chi Chester Township twenty twenty-three program year for the Community Development Block Rent Application.
Any questions? Have we gotten a list together yet, George? From the public works, I guess.
We're getting ready to have a meeting. I believe it's on Tuesday to discuss all the different projects that would be eligible and what areas and we'll bring that list together.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered. Number ten or somewhere. Commissioner Johnary.
Consider a motion authorizing MRRS to waive the penalty and interest owed on the crash fee for three forty-three Hamby Circle. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered.
Consider a motion accepting the proposal from Plate Logic for an amount not to exceed twenty-seven thousand and thirty dollars. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered.
Finally, consider a motion approving the list of bills in the amount of one million ninety-three thousand dollars, six hundred fifty-two dollars and thirteen cents. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Posed. Bills are paid.
Yes.
Number thirteen through seventeen, Commissioner Michael Guardios.
LLC. Rebound reduction in the amount of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, three hundred thirteen dollars and fifteen cents. Fifty cents.
Any any questions? Lisa, this is Autozone? All right. All in favor? Posed, so ordered.
Set a resolution. By Joseph. Lucasus Junior for his property located at twenty thirty-two Locust Street.
Any questions? Everybody good with that? We heard that last week. All in favor? Posed, so ordered. Any questions? All in favor? Posed. Note one, no.
Ask for funds and release to the rising services in the amount of two thousand fifty dollars and zero cents.
Any questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered. Any questions? Lisa, which one? Which one is that one? McDonald's? Okay. Yes. All in favor? Posed, so ordered.
They're not. They're not requesting an extension.
They were moving their line and they were here last week.
So extension of six fifty-nine.
No problem. That's that's because we had so much with George and his report last week, he got it all confused. But that's good. I gotta blame somebody. We'll move along with. Commissioner Joviaco.
Thank you. Consider a motion approving the MOU with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. For the use of township-owned roads as part of the detour plan for the section one oh three US three twenty-two improvement project. So moved.
Second.
Any questions? Joe, did you get all your answers from PennDOT and all that for these detours or some?
Yes. Probably going to cause havoc, but I don't think we have a choice.
Okay. Right. Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Posed, so ordered. We'll move along with the commissioners' reports. We're moving along with Madam Vice President Nicole Whitaker.
Just a couple of updates for the month of October. The Recreation Department brought in fourteen thousand five hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-four cents. Again, I just mentioned the events, our holiday celebration that will be on November twenty-sixth. Our Veterans Day Breakfast, which will be tomorrow beginning at ten AM. Our library is hosting a its annual, this will be our second year doing this. Pie sale, fresh baked by Chef Dana. He was featured on Food Network. Show a few years back. He's out of Delaware. The pies are twenty dollars each. And here are some of the flavors that they're having. Old-fashioned apple, old-fashioned cherry, bourbon peach. Excuse me, bourbon pecan. Chocolate pecan, pumpkin, caramel, apple, and sweet potato pie. And I can say I did get a couple last year, which I had to buy more. They're they're very good. So if you're interested, contact the library. You can pay them directly for your pies. They're due. Orders are due by December the seventh. And they'll be available for pickup on Thursday, December the twenty-second. And then finally, an update for our grants. I know we're constantly applying for grants. So for the for the current year, twenty twenty-two, we applied for fifteen grants. In the amount of four million eight hundred ninety-two thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. We're waiting application decisions on several applications. The sum of the applications that we're waiting on. If I'm reading this correctly, it's three million three hundred and sixty-one thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. So that's an update. You all should have a copy of this in your in your packet as well. And that's all I have.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Whitaker? We'll move along with Commissioner Johnary.
Thank you, sir. All of the financial reports are available, including the Tax Collector's report. and the uh financial status of the Township, the financial statements, as well as the Police Report. All of those uh records are available, reports rather, are available in the Township and office, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Neri? Now, we move along to Commissioner Michael Guardierson.
True, like forty eight Chichester Avenue. There's an uh Application A and Application B. Uh, as I indicated, both of these applications are under review. Uh, they both have the time limit of the January fourth, twenty twenty three, which is which ends the ninety day clock, and as it indicated, uh, we do not meet on January fourth, so um we either have to run the decision next month or ask for an extension. Um, also, six fifty Cherry Tree Road, subdivision land development, that application has been withdrawn, as I mentioned last week. Next, uh, Planning Board Commission is scheduled for eleven seventeen of this year, seven P M, and that's all right.
Anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Guardierson? Are we going to be all right with that, Lisa, if we, I mean, to get the extension for that January fourth, Mike's just talking about? So if it's after the planning commission? But do we have, wait a minute, are meetings before the planning commission, and so will we have? Okay. Guess you need, anything, Mike?
I was just gonna say. Scenario may be dealt with that planning commission. Me, I know forty eight hundred is coming into the planning commission on the seventeenth, I plan.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, am I allowed to go and sit in that meeting?
Sure.
I just can't comment, right? Not even as a resident?
Correct.
You know how hard that is?
All right, we'll move along to Commissioner, did I get you yet?
Nope.
Nope. Okay, Commissioner Joe Viaco.
Thanks. Um. We pretty much made it official uh at at Election Day. Uh, each commissioner had their new trash routes and uh, it's official, we're diving in January first. Um. I don't know how you guys made out, but I I got way less slack than I thought I'd get.
Yeah.
I got more comments over. To thank God, we're doing recycling once a week. Uh, so it's good. I I I hope hopefully it works out on our side. Um. The only other thing I have is I just sent you guys all the silver report. John Shuren sent it to me today. Unless anybody has any questions on anything, I'm going to keep quiet. It's told. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, don't. Uh, anything to be brought to the attention of Commissioner Viaco? But uh, yeah, um, correct with the recycle, correct with the trash. And I did tell my residents, there's going to be hiccups. If we miss you, call us. It's it's not going to be perfect. But uh, majority of them were very well accepted, not maybe one or two. So out of nine hundred people, I'm good. It it worked out. I mean, it was long overdue. You guys, it took us a while, but you got a plan, and hopefully it works out the way we want it. We'll move.
Happy about it. It's like once a week. Um, not necessarily, so our trash day in my world is Monday. So they were necess- not necessarily happy about not being able to get rid of that trash on the first day of the week, especially after the weekend, but they'll be fine. They were, they were happy about that. Yeah, a lot of positive feedbacks.
Yeah, we'll move along with my report real quick here. Um, George, I'm not, I have a report from the E M Emergency Management. Was that? Do you guys get it? Okay, I didn't, I didn't see it in this one. I had it from last week. I wasn't sure, but I printed mine out before, but that's fine. Okay, and then EMS, and we'll get uh the fire marshals to us like yesterday. I only got one quick thing uh from the emergency management was uh just to make people aware. And and we didn't do too much uh anything. I know the fire department did for Fire Prevention Week. But what they brought to us, and you you never really think about it, that it's Crash Responder Safety Week, November fourteenth through the eighteenth. Uh. It's it's a everyday responders risk their lives and limb to help drivers out on the road. And each year, hundreds of those individuals are struck and many are killed by negligence, distracted, impatient drivers. So please join us this week in raising awareness concerning the dangers these individuals face every day they stop to help our fellow travelers. All this can help save lives by moving over lane or slowing down when there is an emergency vehicle stopped on the side of the road or in a travel lane. In addition to being the right right thing to do, moving over is also the law. Pennsylvania, New Jersey, both have move over laws which require murderers to move over or slow down to provide a buffer for the people who work to keep our road roadways safe. So just wanted to put that out there because with all the construction on nine ninety five, our our guys are out there almost once a day uh because of distracted people, because of the construction, because of the impatient people. So that's just something the emergency management found us, and we'll put it out there, and hopefully everybody sees it, so. So anything have any, anybody have anything for my for my committees? Sure, before I go to the professionals, okay? We'll move back over Commissioner Whitaker.
Thank you. Sorry, uh, my apologies. I just wanted to um make note, since this is our first like meeting since last month, to to recognize our our um our staff and our volunteers uh for Community Day. We had another successful um Community Day event. Our table or treats uh was um huge. We had, I think, record number of um children and families that came out this year. We haven't had organizations have to go out and purchase additional candy like in several years, so we had a huge turnout for that as well. Um, and just want to remind everyone that we did have the twin olds plan um at uh last month's planning meeting. And um, as our manager stated last week, we realized that we should have had a um probably like a town hall meeting prior to it going to planning. So we are going to backtrack and have a um town hall meeting and provide residents with a copy of the plan so that they have a chance to uh review it prior to it going back before the planning board next year. Um, and uh, so we'll have copies available for them, and it's also available on the website for the public to review. So going forward with all of our um many, you know, our plans that we're going to be doing, we're going to implement the town hall meeting first, meeting the residents of that area before it goes before the planning board, so that way they all have a great understanding of what's being, what was done and what's being proposed for their areas. Um, rather than just getting a short little snip snippet at a at a planning board meeting. So that's all I have. Thank you.
You're 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 absolutely correct. I mean, I think that's a good way to go because it gives them the involvement in the beginning before we know what we're doing. We got it together and we're ready to, we're we're ready to move forward and say, whoa, but no, that's a good idea for any plan that we implement here, and I think it's a good idea, so. We will, thank you very much for that, and just one comment, Nicole found a Tootsie Rolls for uh Joe, so that night. Not too many Tootsie Rolls out there on Halloween night. It was kind of hard. Yes. So other than that, we will go to our professionals, our engineer, Lisa Katana, Katana Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. You do have a copy of my report. I just want to give you some updates. The Autozone has started their punch list, which is uh subsequent to what I've written in my report. They started yesterday. Um, we got notification yesterday that they started yesterday. Uh, Wawa is looking at at finishing that punch list. I'm still waiting for a date certain as to when they're going to be doing so. I spoke to Penn Dot yesterday. They contacted me. And Alex said that he believed that all of the items for the Penn Dot punch list have been taken care of. I do have something that I'd like to talk to Commissioner Rakowski about uh that I noted today while I was going through there tonight, that I think may help the median issue a little bit at least. Duncan has continued on. You can actually see the building up at this point. And uh otherwise, I can just report uh general progress.
Thank you. Anything to be brought to the attention, engineer?
Lisa, on that Duncan, I spoke to George a little bit about it today. Um. One of the residents uh was questioning, he's not too pleased that her to get out of her house. She's going to have to come through the turning lane now. Um. Will that be improved with the three twenty two project? Is this? I mean, them three houses there next to the Duncan, the they come out through Duncan's, the acceleration lane now? Please, cuz. Yes. All right.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Lisa, um, have we gotten any further with the options for Meeting House Road at Bridge, you know, with the cost estimates and that sort of thing?
Well. So, yeah, right. My office, these shuttles and turning bridges, make sure that they're working in right place, that would be a continued eyeing of work and stuff. I have that plan, hopefully buying again.
Joe, is that light on Bridge and Meeting House? Is that solar or is that powered? I'm pretty sure, yeah, the street light itself. I remember there was an issue that, and you put one up, but I'm not sure if it's solar or the only reason I'm saying that would, since you brought that up, it's still dim over there, and not if it's so they could look at it, but it's, yeah, I don't I don't remember if it was solar. We were thinking about solar at one time, but that I think they ran some power to it, so. It's a new light. I just when it, when she brought, reminded me when you brought up Bridge, it's kind of dim over there, right, so. But anything else for the engineer? If not, we'll move to our solicitor, Michael Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. President. Take his care of and general portion of the meeting. Obviously, we had the conditional use hearing uh and will begin to prepare a decision for consideration based on that. Uh, in addition, uh Commissioner Neri, to follow up, the, we finally did get a date for the Arlene Burkle uh deal, which is Tuesday, November the twenty ninth. At least that's the initial listing, so that just came in this.
Thank you.
Everything else is in order, sir.
Thank you. Anything to be brought to the attention of Mr. Pierce? New business? And oh, George, I, how do I always forget? You don't have it here. Oh, that's it.
Say last week, you're going to be short.
Uh, sorry about that. We'll we'll go to our manager, George Noodles.
Settle back.
Uh, good evening, everybody. My report is on file. Uh, three items to note. The township offices are closed tomorrow. Trash will be picked up on uh Monday for uh Friday's trash route. They're closed for the Veterans Day holiday. Next week, we will be starting our second uh of these small design shred processes as we will be doing the Boothwin Heights section of town. Uh, we've already engaged the public on the first element through uh surveying them, which we're receiving the feedback. And then Monday, we will have all the planners out to do our work session here in the uh the township, and then a uh boots on the ground tour of the area. Uh, and then yesterday, we had our uh the the Act one thirty five hearing for nineteen oh one huddle. Uh, the judge uh communicated to us at the end that he will be uh issuing his uh his opinion and order in the near future.
That's it? Okay, anything to be brought to the attention of the manager? And any new business?
Uh, just one announcement. Um, there's an opening for the Recreation Board from the residents of the Fourth Ward. I put posted something on Facebook, um, and I'm looking for anybody that would be interested in being an active member of the Recreation Board. They have a lot of activities that they do. And I think that um it's an opportunity to help with um a really vital part of our um our whole offering to the to the township. So if you're interested, um, everybody knows, should know my phone number, but it's available, but it's six one zero three one six one five eight eight. Or email me at J W N four two eight at AOL. I know everybody laughs at AOL. But um, uh, I I certainly look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Michael.
Now, uh, I get, I need to confirm with uh our task matters, but I might have an appointment coming up next year on Silver Board. And if that's the case, I'd like to um uh buy cards that were represented a lot. So if we're all going to be together, we're not going to have a problem each the each.
Shall we do that in December?
In December, so if that's okay.
Yeah, we'll wait until Jan. I mean, whenever we do it for all the appointments, that's when we'll do it for January.
Yeah, I usually set that that list between the November and the December meeting, and then the uh you confer and then appoint in January.
That's nice.
Discussion.
We we had this problem once before because Commissioner, uh, hey, it's me, was leaving the board. And the Silver Authority wanted me to appoint him in December, but the new person wanted to support him. I know there's not any change in the board.
Correct.
But I think they should be appointed in January.
Right. I I don't disagree with that. We we have in the past, but the board's staying together. We we need those.
Not in December. We're doing it in January. We might have the names in there, but we never. For the important things.
I have a question, one more question on the Silver Authority. Who uh determines their their rate, their salary? They do it themselves?
So we've not done it.
That's that's not state regulated like ours?
What I'm asking. I said I would ask. I think everybody has the same view, I think.
I I'm not going to make a comment because we're
Almost the same as us. Well, the three.
Yes. That's what I was ready to say.
Couple hundred dollars.
You get paid per meeting.
Hours less than us.
So you don't, you don't know how much you get paid?
I think it's forty one, we're forty three.
No, I'm saying they get paid per meeting. They get paid per meeting, Joe. What is their fee per meeting? I know it's seventy five dollars for special meetings. What is their regular meeting rate?
They get a yearly salary like we do. It's a couple hundred dollars less a year than a commissioner gets. So it's up.
Yeah, no, I have some really real concerns about the board members on there, several of the board members, so. That will be a no for me.
Not fair. So, I I am.
All right, well. We've done with our new business. Need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Posed. Good night. Happy Thanksgiving.